What? When you use change the temperature.
There we go. That's what I was trying to do.
Oh, it's the support.
Yeah. Yeah, I got it. Okay.
Ready now.
Ready when you are.
Special meeting, North Smithfield Town Council, December 7, 2020. Adam Quirk will lead us with the prayer and pledge, please.
Lord, assist with thy Holy Spirit of council, all of those worthy in responsibility. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, to the republic, where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rocco.
Ms. Alps?
Yeah.
Mr. Corvo?
Here.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Here.
Mr. Vannay?
Here.
Mr. Biergard?
Here.
Open forum pursuant to Brown General law 42.6-6D. Is there anybody out there? Speaking in open forum?
Uh, Mr. Ogier has raised his hand. Go ahead, DJ.
Hi, can you hear me?
You can.
Uh, hi, Douglas Ogier, 1984 Providence Pike. Uh, hi, everyone. Uh, at the last council meeting, um, I had put on the agenda to increase signage when entering our town. Uh, there was a lot of good discussion that took place that evening. Um, and I just wanted to encourage the new council in TA to continue that dialogue. And working with the state, it looks like we could do this with little to no burden on the taxpayer. And I just, uh, hope and encourage that, uh, it would make its way onto in a future agenda. Uh, thanks again, and congratulations to you all for, for winning.
So I think that's a very good suggestion. Thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, Mr. Azowski.
Mr. Azowski?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Uh, congratulations and good luck, uh, as you take on the town's business. I noted one item in your agenda tonight that required my comment. As many know, well, some may know, I've been a board member of the North Smithfield Food Pantry for about two years. So please understand, I'm an advocate for the, the North Smithfield Food Pantry. I believe in what is done there. I'm also, in that position, I'm also aware of the resources and the challenges that the pantry faces. It is my perspective as a pantry board member that in June of this year caused me, the then TA, to recommend against an increase of the town's donation to the food pantry during the final budget discussion in June. That recommendation has been criticized by some. I'm okay with that. Our job as leaders in this town has been to make good decisions with the information available to us. I discussed my recommendation with the pantry board and received their understanding. The North Smithfield Pantry is blessed to have a strong volunteer base and to date a substantial number of individual and, and business entities that are financial supporters. It is meeting the challenge of feeding all people who arrive at the pantry, even in this pandemic. Can we always use more volunteers and more financial support? Yes. But I'll repeat what I said in June. With the state still not having adopted a budget for fiscal 21, there is a very large unknown on the funding side of the town's budget. By taking funds from very important line items, we created a contingency fund to potentially rescue the school department from a huge budget shortfall if the state was to cut aid to education. The state has still not approved a budget, so we still today do not know what North Smithfield received for aid to education. In short, the current budget status of the town is far less certain than that of the pantry. I encourage that every dollar of available town funding be held to overcome whatever comes from the state budget process. In the meantime, the food pantry will do just fine. Fear not. If there was a need, I suspect every member of the pantry board would be present to request funding to meet the needs of families in need. For anyone with a burning desire, the pantry will happily accept donations from individuals and any entity that can truly afford to do so. My wife and I will make a donation before the year's end. We hope others will too. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm looking. Uh, there does not appear to be so.
I know Smithfield Town Council sitting as the board of license commissions. Discussion by council board of that, board of other action, a new holiday license for JT Nanspa located at 903 Highway. Mr. Aces, uh, if I read that correctly when I was going through my back, they're not up to date on their, their taxes, whatever.
Are you talking to me?
Yes, they are not up to date on their tax.
Oh.
So I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to support pending payment of back taxes. Uh, so if they make a payment, if they pay off the back taxes, they aren't going back to the council. But approval is pending 1,521,48 cents paid for taxes. Once that paid, uh, I motion to, uh, to approve their request. Any discussion?
Yeah, the discussion here, there are also zoning issues that have not been addressed as well. They've not been signed up by the building inspector. As well as not being, is being behind 1,521,48 cents on paying for taxes over a three-year period. Based on those sort of things, at this time, I wouldn't, I would not be in favor of extending or granting license until even making a record that it was obvious that they're not, they're not compliant. They shouldn't even be applying for a license in my mind, being that far above integrated on their taxes.
I will, uh, based on that, you're absolutely correct. In that, see that when I was going through the back, uh, obviously my motion.
Also respect, Mr. President, your motion is fine. You can go down, you can make a motion, and most motions should be made in a referendum. Then you can go down with either the negative or the negative motion. And then wondering what is the no vote, what is the yes vote?
Okay, so, uh, were you just gonna, you, you're gonna make a motion that not approved, correct?
Well, right now, right now, we're discussing, the motion approved.
Correct.
My recommendation was out of, based on those. Then I would not be in favor of supporting the, the additional license.
Okay, okay.
I'm wondering how they even getting a license and being in there for their taxes. It's supposed to be updated on taxes, but they didn't renew a license.
They're not renewing, they're applying, and that's just part of the process. Um, building and zoning have not declined, they just not have looked at it. So I'm still waiting for the building official and zoning official to look at it, to approve or deny. Right now, it stopped because of the collections, because of the three years. It's actually already in business, they're moving, they're changing ownerships. So that's why they're getting a new license. They didn't have a license before, they only had a business registration. They now want to be open on holidays, so therefore they need the holiday license, and that's why it's coming before you now.
Have they had any communication about paying the taxes?
Yep. Yeah, through the system, um, they were, they were contacted through the system saying that they owe three years in taxes.
Mr. President?
Yes, okay.
Uh, I, I take a motion, we've done in the past, can be continued upon, uh, based on the outstanding three-year schedule, as well as awaiting assigned approval by building and zoning officials, Mr. Anderson. At that point, I think the, uh, the town would be well served to proceed.
Okay, so I'll just add my motion pending approval from Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
As well as the tax, uh, uh, paying, uh, the taxes of the day.
I think that would surprise.
Okay. I'm gonna amend my motion. Do we have a second? Any more seconds?
So this is, this is a new application.
It's a new application, it's not a renewal.
Old business, but a new, a new owner is dating.
Correct, and the old business didn't have a license, they weren't open on holidays. The new owners are choosing to be open on holidays, so therefore they need a holiday license, not a business registration.
So based on what we're seeing, was based on the old owner.
Correct.
New owner is gonna take over.
Correct.
We'll assume that they're gonna take this house home.
Correct.
Anything else? Rocco, please.
Ms. Alps?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vannay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Consider my counsel about that action, I'm picking the bills. Anybody have any questions or done, any, uh, questions that? Moving on. Yes, please.
The, um, Emmy O'Brien, her four benches and one bike rack, forty-three hundred dollars.
I can't.
Yeah.
I can't hear him, no.
You have to turn your microphone on and speak.
I heard something about forty-three hundred dollars.
Emmy O'Brien.
Emmy O'Brien?
Mm-hmm.
What page is that on? That was for some benches and a bike rack for the new take park that we're doing at the annex. That's being reimbursed by DM Grant.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Want to do a follow-up? Any further discussion? Rocco?
Ms. Alps?
Yeah.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vannay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
A new business, the study by council board of action, appointment of council. This time, does anybody have any, uh, anybody that they'd like to put forward as you, uh, you consider the council's?
Michael.
No, for, uh, for the council?
Yes. David. Okay.
I can't hear you, you're gonna need the bottom of the microphone, I can't hear you.
I would like to reiterate, Michael.
Yes.
David. And, no, David.
Igbozi.
Igbozi. For, um, our town's legislature.
This will have a name, Mr. Igbozi, is there anybody, any other names, anybody else propose? You have a second, Mr. Igbozi?
Second.
You have a second, and a special? Rocco?
Ms. Alps?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vannay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Discussion by council board of other action and appointment of assistant town solicitor. Does anyone have any names that they'd like to put forward for assistant town solicitor? I would like to take this opportunity and nominate, uh, current assistant town solicitor, Stephen Ashenbrough.
Second.
We have a second, are there any other names? Rocco?
Ms. Alps?
Yeah.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vannay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Discussion by council board of other action and appointment of municipal court judge. Anyone have submitted a name, uh, a game, or a municipal court judge? I would like to nominate, uh, current municipal court judge, Jared Jarrett.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Rocco?
Ms. Alps?
Yeah.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vannay?
No.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Discussion by council board of other action and appointment of pro big judge. Anybody have any names I'd like to put forward for pro big judge? I will nominate our current pro big judge, uh, Mr. Robert Rossi.
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Rocco, please.
Ms. Alps?
Yeah.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vannay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Discussion by council board of other action on school bonds. First one is Steve Turner Incorporated invoice number 3340. That is three one hundred and eighty-six dollars. Is the motion approved? That was, uh, you mean, we're, uh, functional tax.
Do it.
Journal body or beside.
That's for fundamental research.
Yeah.
We have a second?
Second.
Rocco, on the invoice number 3340, please.
Ms. Alps?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vannay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Uh, the next is invoice number 3355. The amount of one hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-five cents, also signed off on already by the chairman, the lobby. We have a motion. Second.
Second.
Second. Rocco?
Ms. Alps?
Yeah.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vannay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Next, we have, uh, STV DPM invoice number nine zero zero one eight eight three five with the amount of two hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, again, signed off on by, uh, this little body.
Motion to term. Second.
Second. Rocco?
Ms. Alps?
Yeah.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vannay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
And the last one is a good thing, you're in government. That is to invoice number J zero eight two four eight point zero one zero dash nineteen. I'm reading that, that is the amount of one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and eight cents. Is that on the green light?
It's one hundred and sixty-three thousand, it's right on the front page.
Uh, correction, it's a little, it's a little different, uh, number on that one. It's a one hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars and fifty-three cents.
Motion to approve invoice that showed the grant of two thousand eleven seventeen. The amount one hundred and sixty-three thousand, three thirty, fifty-three.
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. O'Hara, second. Discussion? Rocco?
Ms. Alps?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yeah.
Mr. Vannay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Discussion by council board of other action on hunting on town land, specifically the seedless swamp, uh, seed swamp land. But, uh, that may, uh, had to put on the agenda.
Yes, I put this on, it was, uh, especially next time with the previous council, but it was in between our last meeting and this meeting, um, with the chairman of the charter of the, um, conservation commission. And on request that they had, and you can follow, you know, the chain that, that given through. Um, they did, they didn't weigh in, and it's really something that the council needs to weigh in and see if we want to allow hunting on any town-owned properties. I brought it before the council, so that we could discuss it and see where we want to go with it. It's been done in the past, but on a limited basis, and it was only based on the chairman of the conservation commission granting approval. It wasn't any by any, any of our ordinances or anything like that. It's something on, on town land. I brought it before you, like I said, at the request of the conservation commission, they want us to weigh in on it. Um, the police chief has weighed in on it, he can see it, he's been able to, he's been having it on it, that that I wasn't licensed, he, he has a proper license, he is authorized, he can go hunting. Um, one of my concerns that I had with this, we're, we're trying to encourage over the conservation commission, is trying to encourage people to go out, use this land, so it's a place that people buy it and walk it on the trails, and, I think, well, on everything. And then we're gonna allow people to hunt on it, so now you're gonna have people out there that are not familiar with hunting, move the regulations, we have to, we have to be scared, to march, to be out there, and see if, I don't know, if I can see if they're there. There was just a story, I saw it in the paper about in Massachusetts, where a guy shot two hunters, and the guy shot the other hunter, but he didn't, he didn't realize it, and so I have a concern that on town land, I don't really want to have that going on. We don't have that much open space that's out there, so I would, uh, I would be, I would be concerned about the liability of the town and, hunting on that piece. I know in larval they do allow, on town land, but larval has a lot more open space, you know, a lot more state land that allows hunting on air traffic, so it's something that, right up, so if you could discuss it, see where we want to go.
Um, you've got the historical knowledge, uh, that doesn't, it wasn't when the land was given to the town that, uh, certain people were worried, were afraid of the end, that they would be allowed to hunt on that property, you know, is that?
I was not around, I didn't see the swamp, but, but, no, I, I can only deal with that.
What restrictions on that, uh, on what's on the deed over there?
Mr. President?
Yes. Please.
Uh, seeing this on the agenda, I reached out to the council, it's, you know, state around doesn't allow hunting on state-owned land, I understand the safety aspect, I don't hunt, uh, but, uh, my understanding, hunters there are up in, up in tree, tree, uh, tree stands, it's not like they're walking around with their rifles, you know, they wait for the, the game to come through, however, uh, I actually, I'm looking through this, if, uh, if, uh, when you.
Yeah, sure, uh, absolutely. Mr. Igbozi, you, uh, you there?
Yes, I am, Mr. President, um, good evening, everyone, and, uh, first of all, thank you for your support in my reappointment. Um, pursuant to the administrator's request, and, um, I did look into this, I did a couple of things. I, I had, first, I had a conversation with the prior chairman of the, uh, conservation commission, and, uh, he indicated that, um, the, the conservation commission had, um, granted permission to, uh, um, some private citizens to hunt on the town conservation land in the past. So that's how that happened. The, it is no grandfather rights, it's just that the previous owner of this particular land had allowed uh, these private citizens to hunt in the past, so conservation commission, uh, did it, um, you know, until, I guess, the last few years. The, um, I did check the statutes, there's a couple, uh, council, councillor, um, Vannay's correct. Uh, the town council is probably, uh, there is no ordinances on the books indicating what the town's position is on, on the, um,
He stopped talking. David, you still there?
No. Yep. Can you, can you hear me?
You broke out a little bit.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, I'm just apologize. There is, so there is no prohibition, uh, to, uh, hunting on town land. So it is appropriate for the council to weigh in on it. Um, and one final piece of the puzzle, there is some statutes on the books that indicate that uh, if you give permission, uh, to a hunter or anyone to hunt on your land um, without charge, as long as you don't charge them, then, um, you would incur no liability for any of their actions or any actions, that, any injuries that they caused other people. Um, not just hunting, it's allowed anyone for recreational purposes, but the definition of recreational purposes, including hunting. So I think it's really a policy, the long story short is, it's really a policy decision for the council. Um, if they want to continue to allow, um, people to hunt on town land, um, they have to have, be properly licensed, obviously, but it's about giving permission to someone who's properly licensed. I don't know if that answers your question, but I think that was the question that was raised by the administrator earlier today.
Okay, Mr. Igbozi, can you hear me?
Yes, can't hear me?
Yeah, I can, so if we, uh, basically, we could either, we could decide right now if it's gonna be hunting on, on town land or not, that's been, that.
Well, I think you should be giving permission, uh, as, if you were going to make a broad process, I would suggest that you, you do it by ordinance. But if you want to grant someone in particular permission on town land, then, then that's something you could do. I think somebody would ask for permission and you would grant it.
We, we could ask you to create an ordinance to give the conservation commission, or the chair of the conservation commission authority, and that can be an ordinance in that.
If, if that's what you, if that's, if that's what the council wants to choo- choose to do, I, I think if you're gonna create an ordinance, we could, we certainly could draft an ordinance that affects for purposes of discussion, and maybe, um, other types of, um, proposals might come forward. I, I just don't know the answer to that, but the council certainly could do that. It appears that that's the way it's been done in the past. That the, the conservation commission has granted permission.
So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Jim. Uh, the previous conservation commission has a box of records, somewhere in this building, right?
Not that I am aware of.
Oh, okay, 'cause, uh, you and I had this discussion, there was a box, we could get to it. We'll find it, um, previous conservation commission in acquiring the, uh, Phillips Silva property, I believe there was a letter in there from Mr. Silva, I was told, because I had not verified it, that's why I wanted to see that box. Um, there's supposedly a letter in there where Mr. Silva had given, uh, permission to Mr. Martin to hunt, and I would like to believe was also part of the donation of the name to the town. So, uh, we might want to be able to carefully, if we take a look, if we can find that box of records and take a look through it. Uh, if it is indeed part of the transfer of the property, that's, that's something we have to take a look at a little bit deeper. Thank you, Mr. President.
I, I tend to agree, uh, with Mr. Vannay, that, uh, we don't want encouraging outdoor activities like that, or encouraging people to use the, uh, our own space, and then mostly encouraging people to go hunting on that space, it seems like a bit of a contradiction. I don't know, I just. Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I tend to agree with you, fact that unlike larval and other areas where it's not, you know, expensive, that not knowing, you have two young kids out there. You know.
Hello. Appreciate it.
I brought it to the council's attention, I mean, like, I kind of weighed in on it, and you can look and see what this town does, and this town does, and this one does, and they're all different, every town is different. Larval has a different type of land, a lot of their town-owned land, about state-owned management land, that, I think it's a lot of it in the land, or that they're buckled management, and stuff like that. It is, I don't know, they just. Is out of the nature of the land, hunters can use. And there are people that have, when they have something going on, they're out there with the voice house, and sometimes it gets, can get a little dicey sometimes. I'm not aware, like I said at the beginning, this is one of the people who say that that transfer of land, it may have missed, I'm not aware of that, I don't know if they do, I don't know, neither one of us know.
Councilor, I haven't seen it. I've been informed that there was a part of the transfer.
That's what I'm saying, I'm not aware of it, and so I'm not saying we can do this over it, but if it gets to a point where we allow here, we don't allow there, or we, you know, and we start, we don't have that much open space, how we start with? We just picked up another 110 acres, we've got a bunch, 40 acres, and then we have little pieces, 40 acres, and then we have the swamp. Swamp is probably the biggest, you know, thing that the town owns, eight, twelve. It's not easily accessible, it's finished, and there are people that have hunted here in the past, but at least they had courtesy to say, let me continue to do that with new people, and so that's all we have to tip up on. It's just my personal thing that I wouldn't be able to, but the council.
Anybody else? Mr. Corvo, please?
I agree, if we're going to use open space, I don't want to, you know, unless I have some sort of signage there as to, or everybody might not know, we might not know what, what I'm seeing here, so I agree that, especially able to face it, maybe we're not pushing anything.
Maybe if you look into more and get more information, it's just, we're here so we can pursue that and get more information, find out what it is on Cedar Swamp and whatever the communities, we will see, maybe there is something to keep that, that they're not accessible at all during certain times, you know, and so that may be an option as well, but just to say not much that we can hunt on. I'm not a big supporter of that, not that I don't hunt in with, or I don't think it's fair or anything, it's a safety issue, liability issue for the town.
I'll suggest that we ignore it and continue further study. A second half. Okay, moving on then. I've discussed my counsel about other action and our request to waive out of district sewer assessment for 145 or 147 Greenville Road from the Sewer Commission.
Hello, my name is.
Mr. Shret is actually on line. Okay, if you want to allow her to speak, yes, Mrs. Shret, just give me one second, we can do our last bit of it.
Oh, he's right there. His face was on there, it was just me before. Mr. Dory of the Sewer Commission is also on as well.
I'm going to ask Mr. Shret to speak first. Mr. Shret?
Hi. My name is Sharon Shret, and I live at 147 Greenville Road. And myself and my neighbor Ken Page are asking that you can waive the out of district sewer assessment. We have been working on this for close to two years now, and when we first started looking into tying into the sewer system, we were stopped by the town and asked to go through the process to tie in as well as with our neighbors across the street. And in the course of the year and a half that this has taken, the three other homeowners decided to back out of the, of the project. So the only two people left are myself and Mr. Page, 145 and 147 Greenville Road. Since we're not tying in through the town, we have to pay the entire amount, all in one fell swoop, instead of over 20 years, as it would have cost us through the town to tie this in as a project with all of our neighbors. So we are asking that you waive the out of district fee, considering how much more expensive this is, all in one lump sum to both of us, and that, you know, we've done everything the right way, we've gone through the Sewer Commission, I attended probably 10 or so meetings, and, you know, we want to do it the right way for the DEM, so rather than coming up with some other crazy way, we're, we want to tie into the sewer system. And the $5,200 is kind of pricey, especially when, you know, we have to pay it all in one lump sum.
Sure it is. Could you say?
Mr. Dory?
Okay.
Can I add something? That's in addition to, my name's Kenneth Page, I'm at 145, that's in addition to the cost of installing the sewer, and that's all due right up front as well.
Right. Did Mr. Dory want to speak?
William Dory, chairman of the Sewer Commission, 386 Great Road. Ms. Shret did come before the Sewer Commission a number of times, and, you know, she was, she was a stalwart champion of connecting to the sewer. My hat's off to her, a lot of people don't stick with it as long as she did, and she was very good in front of the Sewer Commission. Unfortunately, as she stated, three of her neighbors dropped out, which made the ability to connect as a group, as a district, impossible. So the recommendation was made that she connect with her neighbor on their own. As part of their own out of district assessment, because they're going to be out of district, the statute or the ordinance requires a $5,200 connection fee that goes into the sewer enterprise fund, that ends up funding future costs to property owners to connect and maintenance of the sewer system. It was the only equitable way the town had of distributing this cost amongst newly connecting people. At the Sewer Commission meeting, as you can read from the minutes, there was a robust debate back and forth. One of the main concerns raised by myself was the fact that the, we may be setting a bad precedent concerning the connection to the sewer and the waiving of this assessment. The ordinance does not give the Sewer Commission the authority to waive the connection, but at the same time, we, there was a concern that if the town council waived the connection fee, that we would be setting a bad precedent. There was one board member who was concerned, that given COVID and given the cost of the project, that we may dissuade some individuals from connecting to the sewer. And I told him I would make his concerns known to the town council, but ultimately the decision rests with the town council to waive the fee, as it's outside our pay grade to do so.
Can you register a second?
I'm sorry?
Can you register a second?
Yeah, she speaks. I can only do it if they speak.
Okay. My concern is setting a bad precedent. I understand it's a lot of money, but the next month, someone might pay $15,000, they spent and haven't spent it in five months' money. Would it be of any help, and I'm just throwing this out there, only one or five, one or five people, but would it be of any help if instead of waiving it, we allow it to be paid over, over a certain period of time, instead of one lump sum?
Excuse me, sir, the sewer assessment fee is paid over four years already. It's $1,300 a year, paid in four annual installments.
This is actually a time, if you, if you, if you read the unofficial minutes of school, did I, did I, not in shape of not granting this request, did it go under jurisprudence? There is a responsibility to do that, also the council. Things like this happen in the past, I believe, since when you remember the case, where a woman kept having rhino pups, I don't know, she still was replacing, but she still had an assessment that was due, and she wanted that waived, it was waived at that time. Based on the circumstances that are here before us, I have one question of just the Dory. The two houses that are tying in from the five that were originally there, are they the two at the end of the line, or are they in the middle? Or at the beginning?
Depending, if you're, if you're facing the bridge, if you're on the road and you're facing the bridge, there are the two houses to the right, as you have the on-ramp and the off-ramp to 146.
No, but they were originally, this is an old school project, and those five houses didn't get tied in, and I don't know why, I don't completely find an answer why they weren't tied in. So it was pursued to have those five houses tied in, and it didn't happen because they backed out, said that we didn't want to do it like that. These two folks are saying that we need to do it because they need to replace the services, and this is a cheap operation. But they were paying the whole cost to run this line. My question to this Dory, maybe you can answer this, if the five people, and they're the last two on the line, but that line runs by those three houses, if they determine that they did want to tie in, from which I would tie into that with others, if someone runs a small line, and then they come back and tie in, what do they do?
This is different. It's not like they're paying for infrastructure like with that, Silver Fox, on the millions, or in Gators Pub, where we waived it half of the three, half of it went to the developer. We did the same thing at Silver Fox. The developer got $2,600, the town gets $2,600. It's still like this, it's just a tiny thing, which they would have four years to pay the fee. Is that correct, Mr. Dory?
Yes, sir, town administrator. We have let developers get a piece of the fee for future connections. We did the same thing with Gators Pub, when they ran a sewer line that met the town's specifications, that would allow future individuals to connect. There was an agreement that the town council reached with Gators in order to facilitate the laying of that sewer line, because they were making an investment in our town. In this particular case, it's a little different, because the sewer line is only going to be run for these two houses and connect to the main line. There is not going to be really an opportunity for other houses to connect to this particular line, as with some of the other projects where we've crafted, for lack of a better term, revenue sharing agreements with the builders of those sewer lines.
So they can't be pulled back in the future.
You're supposed to go be tying in, going back to the front line, so I don't understand that, I was asking a question. Based on, based on what the Sewer Commission has admitted and everything, I make a motion that we waive the, I mean, 5,200, I mean, rotation 145 and 17.
Good motion, on that, a second. What a second half. I'll second the discussion. I'm just concerned about the, what happens when the next person must waive that. And they might have heard of the hidden story as well. And I'm not, I'm not telling you what's so up, I'm not telling what they're saying at all. My concern is what happens when the next person puts it on and says, they'd like to have that sewer connection, you waive, because they expect that amount of money.
Case by case issue. Doesn't set, doesn't set precedents, case by case issue.
It is a case by case issue, but it's also the appearance of being there too. You know, that's my concern. And I want to give that, I'd love to say, I'd love to waive it, if we all want, but that's my concern right now. You want?
Because it's two households, and they're trying to push them to come to the sewer line, I would be hoping to have that session, that they can be split, split the cost with each of them for their course of total time.
So that would be a, that would be a second motion. Okay. No, would that be?
My name is motion on second, but from the.
I am correct, I have a motion, but she, what she's saying would be, would be a second motion, if this was fast. I think that's a, I think it's a very good idea. It's a good suggestion anyway. Mr. Shret, would you be, would that be amenable to you?
I didn't hear the whole motion.
What Vice President House suggested is that the two of you split the cost, and instead of being that you each, if the total, the two of you would only pay a total of $5,200, not $5,200 each.
That would be acceptable.
That would be absolutely acceptable.
Okay, I think that's a win then. Okay. Well, we got a call from first.
I'll make my motion then.
Okay.
So there's a waiver, 50% of the cost in the time, they, there will be $2,600, based on, based on the comments of both Mrs. Shret and Mr. Page.
Okay. So we have a second, you men.
Just not to jump in here on your guys' motion, if you're going to amend it so that they're each paying 50%, you may want to also address the, the four annual installments that are driven by the ordinance at $1,300 apiece. So you may want to set the annual payment for each one of them to reflect the reduced amount.
So if you're going to reduce it to 26 each, divided by four, so that they make the payments on $2,600 one time, once a year, what tax?
Correct, yeah. So you have four payments. Six fifty each. What payments are $650 instead of $3,900? We already have a motion, we have, we've amended it.
Thank you.
Okay, does that make everybody, everybody feel whole with that one? Yeah?
Yeah. I'm just having trouble hearing you guys really clear throughout the meeting, I apologize.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Biergert?
Yes. Discussion by council on other actions. A property located at Platte 1 and Platte 91 and 92, owned by Munchen Family Trust. That was Vadne.
Mr. President, this is then before the council, just the council, in the middle of June, initially been dealing with. We've been dealing with it, the building inspector's been dealing with it, the municipal court has been dealing with it, numerous, there's, I have been coming to the council for discussion, they've been there. You have most of the paperwork, you can follow it, it's been going on for quite some time, since July of 2018, it's been going on. It's not getting better, it's getting worse. They've been cited with cease and desist orders, they've been fined, they haven't paid the fines, they haven't filed with cease and desist, they continue to do it, they've been cited for continuing nuisance, as well as it becoming an unsafe condition for folks. When we first heard this in July, in June, I should say, they were, there was a petition by almost every house in that neighborhood of lots, who were complaining about this issue. Unregistered vehicles, illegal dumping, a whole number of issues. It went before the municipal court in November, I believe, or the 18th of November, and he didn't show up for his hearing. And the municipal court judge took his fine, which was worth a half, and he didn't pay full price with it, he was had to pay half the fine, but because he didn't invoke the full fine, and, fine questioning, he suggested that the town pursue this in Superior Court. And I think that I had requested. And I think that, I I had requested that in July of this year, and was told that, well, let's leave it with the municipal court, which I don't prefer to say with the municipal court, but it doesn't appear that a municipal court judge was heading, is doing enough to protect the town in this instance. That's why they go for the municipal court judge. So it's it's it would be my life, it would be, it would be my wish that we pursue this in Superior Court, get a cease and desist, file a paperwork, get a cease and desist from the Superior Court, that we have that we have one standing on, and shut this thing down. It just continues to get out of the court. It's 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 just an unsafe condition for the whole neighborhood right now. And if the municipal court isn't gonna do anything about it, and I think that behooves us, the senators, Superior Court, and have a judge weigh in on it, and say, yeah, or no, one year ago. We're allowed to do that, fire that, fire that on state law.
Yeah, I don't see the point. I don't see the point of setting it back in the municipal court.
Mr. President?
Yes.
There's a gentleman named Joe who's trying to speak, do you want me to let him speak?
Is the what's speaking on this matter?
I'm not sure, I believe so, he keeps trying to unmute himself, so I didn't know if he wanted to allow him to speak or not.
Yeah, no.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yeah, what's your name, sir?
My name is Joseph Lamagna. I'm an attorney, I'm at my office with Mr. Munjen. We are here to participate in this hearing and to let you know that we're prepared to cooperate any way we can to alleviate the situation. Mr. Munjen finds himself in an impossible situation where he had his business located at a site that he and the other owner of the site thought were properly zoned for a number of years. And they learned some time ago that the property that they were occupying was not eligible for rent to a third party. That the license that was held there was indigenous only to the owner of the property. He had to move, and he really had no place to go, there was very little space in town that's zoned properly.
Joe, hold on.
Yes, sir.
His phone keeps going like this, so it's making it really hard to understand what he's saying, and then we're having, it's hard for me to get it on the microphone anyway. It's a little bit of both. All right, Joe, can you try again?
I'll be even more brief, we're here to indicate that we will cooperate fully. We'd really like some help, if we could get some from the zoning board, the planning board, anybody that could assist us in finding a proper industrial, properly industrialized zone for this business. It it's a business that enjoys a very good reputation, it's a five-star rated business, substantial taxpayer, they want to stay in town. We just need a little help in in finding a spot. Mr. Munjen's been searching for years for a properly zoned industrial spot for this business.
It's not the job of the government to help Mr. Munjen find another location, I mean, he's been, he's been in violation for a long time, and the people that live in that area, it's it's just very unfair to those people, and that's my concern right now. My concern is the people that live in vicinity of Mr. Munjen's operations, more so than Mr. Munjen, if I can be frank. So when you say that he's willing to put this to rest and get this, and help us out with this, so what is he willing to do? What can we do, what would he want to do in the immediate future?
I think in the immediate future, that he will attempt to work with the zoning board, the planning board, and and continue to attempt to find a place in town that will support his business. But it's impossible to just completely shut down. He gets hired by municipalities, by utilities, by any number of of individuals and firms to assist in disaster and, you know, power outages, whatever. The point is, we're here to tell you that we'd like to cooperate, we'd like to work with the town to stay in the town.
I want to give you this, this is a suggestion, why don't we, I'm gonna suggest that we go forward with Mr. Vaney's suggestion, and if we, as we're going along, it's not gonna happen overnight, so if we see that you start to try to correct the matter, we can always pull the case, we can always, and we don't have to go through, follow through with it. But in the meantime, we're, I'd like to get, go rolling, and we can always stop it if we see that you're making headway.
My my biggest, my biggest concern is that, actually two things, one, violations is almost two years old. Probably more important than that is, you know, you didn't show up to the municipal court date. So what, why would we be led to believe that all of a sudden, you know, you're gonna end up taking the violation serious and rectifying the situation?
Well, the only answer I have for that is that he's hired me to assist him. I don't know if that makes any difference, and maybe it doesn't, but.
Well, it doesn't because you're not, it's gonna be moving and dealing with the neighbors.
Understand.
Mr. President. Mr. President, if you look at the last letter that you got, the building inspector to him on the 2nd of October, it stated that it's illegal use of the property and it includes a dangerous condition. He had expected it two days in a row, and from one day to the next, it got worse. It's not getting better, drive by there, many days, by any day of the week, drive by there, it's not getting better.
I agree.
If if Mr. Munjen is looking to pursue a different piece of property that he can move his business to, that behooves him to do that, it's not, it's not for, it's not for me, or you, or anyone on this board to do that. If the administrator wants to help find a property, that's well within his purview to do that. It's not within our purview, our purview is to enforce the laws of the town. And right now it's illegal use of the property, it's not getting better, he's not showing that he's even trying to get it better. Unfortunately, our municipal court, in my opinion, failed us in this respect, where they had the opportunity to address it, with daily fines and whatnot, and then they flat out said, well, we're gonna put the fine out there, but the request, he said, send it to Superior Court. So let's send it to Superior Court, get a cease and desist in Superior Court, and then we can deal with it, and we'll deal with it afterwards. We're not, if you're spending our resources on this thing, we need to get a concrete decision on this. If the judge in Superior Court says, no, we're not being fair, then okay. But right now, he's not being fair, he's illegal use of the property, we need to address it, we need to put it there.
I agree with Mr. Vaney. I agree, now, Mr. Vaney, you want to go forward with the motion?
He should be.
Yes.
There he is. Go ahead.
What kind of timeframe would we be looking at to get this to Superior Court?
Well, it's not about how quickly you get in, I mean, I would suggest, I would just ask the council that you may want to schedule a, an executive session to discuss, obviously, any of the the process and procedure of the case. Obviously, this is outside the defense of the town. This is a proactive lawsuit that you're discussing, where you'd have to schedule, set up a budget, and select counsel. But the timeframe, you know, now with COVID-19 and court calendars, you have a little bit less control of how quickly you get into court, but you can certainly file an action in due course. When you would get a decision, I can't tell you right now, based upon the status of the court system right now. I would think, I think we should at least look into that, and I could give the court, give the the council a more concrete advice. I'd like to do that in executive session, maybe at the next meeting.
The 21st, then?
Yeah.
That's 21st, you can get.
The 5th, or the 4th, I don't know.
Next meeting? No, it's not, that's, we're meeting in Christmas week.
We should have a meeting, with the respectness, but we should have a meeting, number one, this, there were a number of issues out there, legal issues that are pending, that three members of this watch and report this even immediately, as well as there's an issue going on right now, looking to get a settlement to finish up the project. We've already tied it to the 21st, I didn't know that, we already tied it to the 21st, and we didn't address it, but we skipped over that in ten more minutes. That we need an action by the council on the 21st potentially.
Okay.
So if there's nothing else, I would suggest that on the 21st, we have all these outstanding potential litigation, litigation issues, so that you folks can go up to speed. We did that two years ago, the day it came in, and we were all, we were all, there were a few dozen issues at that time. And I think we called it down, I think there's seven or eight right now. And I think you folks need to go up to speed, one of them is important, because they're trying to resolve it before the end of the year, and we've already tied it to the 21st, not knowing what's gonna be. Because we we need to schedule that far out when we're discussing this stuff, that, when the attorneys can be available.
Right, is that where it's, okay, we'll stick with the original count. Ms. Heskey, is that work for you, we have a?
Yes.
We brought the speed on those, on those court cases on the 21st?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. So, Mr. Munjen's, what we're doing with Mr. Munjen is, now it looks like he gets some time, so if you, I'm making some progress, and we'll see what we can do. But right now, we're gonna go forward with what Mr. Vaney suggested.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll just put down a calendar, okay? Thank you. Thank you. Discussion my counsel vote on other actions on abatements and supplemental bills. Mr. Heskey.
This comes to the recommendation of the deputy tax assessor. There are abatements total in $8,846.06. Council President, do you want me to do it by abatement and then by supplemental altogether?
Yeah, by each one.
Okay. All right, so they're basically self-explanatory, the first one is an error that was done in the camera system, but if you see the supplemental, there's a supplemental that overs, that takes care of that, plus it gets billed a little bit more, and then the MCS Enterprises, we have to go back six years. The land was recorded at 65.55 acres, and we discovered that it's only 55.7 acres. So Jen went back six years and abated six years for the difference of those, that acreage. You have any questions? Okay. And then the supplemental bills, the first one has to do with the Covia Enterprises, which is also on the abatements. The CO was issued on 1/29, so there's a prorated bill. Second one was selling equipment, it was tangible account, account that was under assessed. And the third one is Ziegler, Warren, and Linda, and that's also a CO that was issued on 1/13. It was a new construction, so it was prorated. Supplemental bills total $9,666.75.
Do you have any questions, sir? Yeah, I'll take one of them.
Abatements of $8,846.06, and also supplemental tax bills of $9,666.75.
Motion, we have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Discussion my counsel vote on other action on transfer of funds, this will be a 2021 budget from Pumpkinfest Food Pantry. Ms. House?
I guess this would be on the agenda due to the, in the 2020-21 budget, there was $3,500 approved from Pumpkinfest, with that being canceled this year, and the food pantry only receiving $250. I wanted to transfer those funds to the food pantry due to the pandemic and the extra help that citizens in this town may require.
Who else have any thoughts on that?
Sorry, did you say more of the funds from Pumpkinfest?
Transfer of them from Pumpkinfest.
Thirty-five hundred.
Yeah.
Okay, nobody has anything else, so.
I'll agree with her, because a lot of families being bitten, that way, they're single parents, young children are getting off now for extra help, and it's not going to get better for a while. So there will be more of a need for extra help, but these people have never asked for help before.
Okay, I just thought a couple of they agree with Mr. Vaney's sound on this. It's it's, it's a good gesture, it's not a lie, it's not a body of rust, and I think it's important, especially considering the pandemic. And with the pandemic, a lot of people are out of work. Thirty-five hundred dollars, my whole long. So I'll take a motion then to accept, to transfer $3,500 from the Pumpkinfest account to the Food Pantry. That's a motion. You have a second? Anybody else, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. House?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Okay, discussion my counsel vote on other action, kind of forming a committee to display town hall residents' artwork within town hall. With this, intent of this is, we did have a beautiful town hall, it'll cut the walls apart, and I was thinking the other day that it might be a good idea to put an opportunity for local artists to display their work. Various works, could be photography, could be painting, could be drawing, whatever, on the walls of town hall, and then it would be a rotating basis, and then the committee would be the ones to decide which artists are gonna be displaying their works, and how it's gonna be displayed, and and who knows, I think the committee could end up blossoming into, maybe even artists guild, you know, but it starts, I think it's very efforts. It started this level, and we can put a few people in town, on a committee, look for the talent, display the artwork, and I think it'd be a great way to start, and a great way to promote local talent in town. So what I'm looking for then is to, I will make a motion, I'm looking for Mr. Jose to set up a a resolution to form a committee, and we'll get in with the details, what would you have future date later on, David, but that's, you pretty much got the gist of it, what I'm looking to do.
Three members?
Once again, I know I'm just thinking about it, so let's discuss that.
You need to know that we're looking at, let's have that discussion, you know.
I don't know, I think it's, I think, I'd like it, I'd like it to be more of a laid back, low pressure, I want the people on the committees to enjoy it. So I would think it'd maybe like seven or eight members. I think that's a good number, and I, the few people that I spoke with about this, I've gotten very positive feedback. And it's a great opportunity for local talent, and like I said, who knows what it's gonna blossom into, it could have become much bigger than just the walls on the town hall, let's get started on this one.
And if anybody's wary with these, personally, how they can put things on walls without? And if anybody's worrying with these, um, personally, how they can put things on walls without, to make, causing them to...
Well, that's all stuff that has to be worked out.
You're not bad. That's worked out. And I would love to see it until the time we have young artists, old artists. And sometimes between one and one to the other. And it's a tide.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And this will take a long step forward since, um, no one's really allowed in town hall right now. Maybe they're also working around tapestry, or maybe they have screen on the websites so that people can see the artwork here, and whether it's selling here or bidding or whatever, we can open up to the websites and stuff.
See, it's growing already.
Well, the, the hope is, is that come the springtime, people will, they'll come back to the village, because the, the, the people that work here, I know that they don't want to put the, their walls like that, but they, they, yeah, they before about that. They're even here to here.
Yeah.
Um, and so what can we do? So, yeah, this is a good idea. It, you know, it, it may not even just be residents from town. You, the other people are trying to stay around. You know, so things, things to take from it. But, yeah, it would, it would eventually, once we get people coming into the building, especially on the first floor, where the public comes to do, pay their taxes, get their permits, get their building permits and stuff. That's all on the first floor. And, and right now, they're just all over like this.
Right. And maybe even, uh, we could have the, uh, some of the schools, uh, could have competitions. So who, you know, if, who the great school kids, whatever, they display their ones, they display their, their, their art in the house chambers or the town hall on first floor. So it, it's a good opportunity for everyone.
Decorate the building. Decorate the building. Just gotta get the people in. And we're working it. Like, I'm, I'm optimistic that come the spring, early summer, we'll be back, we'll be back to normal, or, or somewhere close to normal, closer to normal.
So, uh, well, that's, uh, the thing, like I said, this is just an idea for, also, your input is valuable and, and welcome. So we're thinking, I'm thinking getting new people, uh, yeah. And then, and I would like to stress that people on the board do not have to be honest themselves. They just have to be willing to, you know, sit down and talk to their artists and look at their work and take a determination. So if there's anybody out there that might be interested, you don't have to be honest yourself, nor in my opinion, so, this new board. So, uh, I'll make a motion then to, Mr. Seozy to create a formal resolution so we can create this committee of eight people. Uh, but I was gonna say, Seozy, would it, uh, is it, would it be possible to make the definition of the committee a little big so it can expand a little bit? They don't wanna narrow, lock people into one, one specific thing. I'd make it a little big so they can, like I said, so they can branch out if that's what, uh, the direction it takes them.
Mr. President, what I'll do is I'll prepare a draft and circulate it to the council well ahead of the meeting, and that will give the council some time to think about it. And, um, I'll try to, you know, you know, add some possibilities and let the council, um, you know, there may be other committees in the state that are doing similar work. I'll, I'll come up with something for the council's consideration. Uh, the only point I would make as a procedural matter is, uh, whatever size you made the committee, you always have to make it an odd number. You, you don't want to make a committee that would have a, never be able to make a, a deciding vote in the event that people disagreed. And I know you, that should not be the case in a committee like this, but my experience is you always want an odd number.
Yeah, I, I agree with it. Yeah, you're right. I was thinking the same thing, that it was gonna be more of a laid back and big thing. I wouldn't expect that to happen. You're right. You think I'm...
Not only you would want an odd number so that you can have a decision made, but to be honest with you, you did the charter of your mission. If we ever had a point we were forthforth, that it probably wasn't a good idea. The number of people with, kind of, and something like this, is, you're not gonna say to your, it's like, I gotta go with one role or whatever. They're really gonna say, yeah, these are good pictures of that. So the number, the number, I understand, they just pointed, it was something more of a, um, a decision making towards you on an odd number, but something like this, I think it would be...
If that was my number, right. I think there'd be a lot of factors.
It's just that if you were to make the same thing, yeah. This is sort of what we put up because my, uh, my idea is good, and you think it's not, and it can be two different things, especially if they, freedom of, freedom of speech and all that, and they didn't, you know, go table to be put up there.
Right. All right, so that's a motion, uh, Mr. Seozy, uh, for the resolution. And do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? Any more discussion on this? Roll call, please.
I just have a quick question. Did we decide on seven or eight members?
Eight members.
Eight members, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadner?
Yes.
Mr. Biergert?
Yes.
Discussion by council, one of the action on Forest Dell School House. It is a, uh, this is actually a question that's developed for the invoice of fourteen thousand five hundred fourteen dollars, nine cents. Hey. You have the invoice ready. I'll copy the invoice in the back. You're motion to approve fourteen thousand five hundred fourteen dollars, nine cents.
So...
Is there a second? So, I have a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, just sort of, we are, this is an ongoing project. It's a hundred eighty thousand dollar project. Some of that's grant money, some of this money is coming from the town's budget that we appropriated for it. It's, it's, it gets reviewed by, by, uh, he's an architect that serves on the, on headboard. It gets reviewed by him, plus there's a client outside firm as well. If you're due by day, you see that they're, they're already working on it right now, from the inside of it. So it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing project that they're running this building. By us putting town funds into the project, they're able to access state monies, matching state monies as well. And so they continue to do that, and, and it's a good, um, good relationship that we have with the, the heritage association to do that. Um, they work really hard to get grant money, and they take the money that we give them and they try to, maybe even there. It's an ongoing process. It's an ongoing project. This is an ongoing project that's been supported in the past, and that's why they have the, uh, the motion. We've already, we've already, one of the things that saying, it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a payment on, it's a progress payment on.
Okay. Yes, we have a motion in a second on this. This, yes. Roll call, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadner?
Yes.
Mr. Biergert?
Yes.
Round of applause to your chair.
No, no, we will do the...
That's not what I meant to do.
Skip the road, this is...
I'm sorry. Yeah, the whole business, discussion by council, one of the action on update, I mean, it's all building review task.
There, there's nothing to vote on tonight, but I just wanted to give you an update that we are in process of trying. And some of you are aware, and this is something to get updated on. Next meeting, we'll have the attorney there outside outside council because Solis, who was, his contract is conflicted, he can't be here because of the town on this, on this case. We're trying to, we're trying to resolve the issues before we get to arbitration. We're, we're doing self-mediation right now instead of doing whole mediation. Um, we're in that process right now. That's why I said, we set a target date up to 21st. We need to have a decision on, from the contractor under sixteen, so we can get on the general seventeen for the twenty-first meeting. So we set, we set that all up in motion. But hopefully, I believe they will continue the, the recommendation on task force, task force meeting the week before that, fifteen or the sixteen. Um, I know that Mr. Nelson is, is out there somewhere. Um, I don't know if he has anything that he wants added with as a chair.
I have nothing, I have nothing to add.
He has, he has nothing to add.
That's what, that's what, we're hopeful, like, you know, it's been a long road. We're trying to wrap it up. There's some late issues that make you aware of and everything, and potentially, uh, you won't be able to, as long as we have. I think we're right there. We're right there at the, at the end of the day. So that's why I appreciate you, you stayed on the 21st, because you may be able to get it done. Okay, we have other issues.
There's an option on that. So now let's go back. So that's it.
That's it.
Uh, was, you know, uh, do you want to go to your chair? Hold on.
Thank you.
Hold on, babe. Thank you. Thank you.
We'll, we need to sign...